This conference will now be recorded.
Will now be recorded.
Very good. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council. Welcome to tonight's meeting, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. It is eight P. M. There is a quorum present. And in the chambers, four members of the city council. And then Mr. Our council member Kerry Ricketts is online, audible and visual. Uh, some of these items I will dispense with in due to in the interest of time uh, due to our delay. Uh, invocation and pledge allegiance. You bow your heads. Holy Father, thank you for your protection over us and your guidance. We thank you for all things. We thank you for the city and the many blessings we have. In Jesus' name, amen. And if you'll join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, item three, citizen participation. Is there anybody in the council chambers that would like like to make comment to the city council? Is there anybody online that would like to make comment to the city council? There is none online. There is none in the chambers. I go to item number four. Items of community interest, you can read that. I'm going to uh, go over that, you know. Go to item. Five. Administrative reports. Uh, council, is there any item that you would like to pull? All right then. No questions on that. Uh, item six, updates on community parks projects. Uh, I would like to go ahead and dispense with that unless council has any objections. All right, we will go on to item number seven, consent agenda. Counsel, is there any item on the consent agenda you would like to pull? If there is none, I would like a, I have a motion, please.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion is made to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Ricketts is an aye as well. It is unanimous. Motion passes. Item eight. Discuss, consider, and act on request for use of contingency funds for change order number two on the Kessler, Keller Hassett Road project, bridge project in amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Mister Rogers, could you address this? It's a debt we owe, council.
Yes, this is not a fund debt, but it is a debt we have. Uh, this project originally was in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget uh, for eighty thousand dollars for the Keller Hassett Road Bridge up here to the north of town. Uh, we finished that project out at seventy-five thousand and twenty-two dollars. As soon as the project finished in October of twenty twenty-one, we were notified that the contractor was placing a claim against the project for delays due to weather and due to an AT&T line that was in the way of the project. So they had shut down, barricade, do a number of things, but they went through, texted, looked at their project, looked at their claim, went back, forth. And so in uh, May, we finally received that the, we're working on the change order for the project. That was May of twenty twenty-two, finally. And then in June twenty-two, they approved, they, we sent the, they sent it to us. We got to look at it. Then in August, they basically agreed to it as that we had to sign the third-party funding notification because in the contract, any contract overruns were to be paid by the city of past. So after they authorized them, they have a bill of thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars owed for those delays. We do not know when we'll see this bill. Like I said, this thing, we got the notice of claim in October twenty twenty-one. We are October twenty twenty-two. We have not seen the bill yet. Don't know when we will see that bill, but.
We have the bill in hand right now, right?
Yeah, we don't have a bill yet in hand. We just have, the change order has been approved.
Understood.
On the invoice, whenever it shows up. Talking with Marcy, she just said we need to encumber these funds so that whenever that does come, we can pay our bill.
All right, so we know it is coming. We know the amount that's coming. Uh, Marcy Lamb has verified, we do have sufficient funds just coming out. Uh, we have over four hundred thousand in contingency. Uh, so, uh, the council, do you have any questions, Mister Rogers, about this project? Uh, or this late coming bill on a cost overrun?
Yeah, I didn't, Mayor, I've got a question for David. Uh, looking at page nine and looking at the, your description and reading through this piece. It, it really looks like it's more AT&T's fault than them delaying getting with the contractor to sell things out. I'm a little. I think AT&T is going with the big guy. I don't want to upset AT&T and asking the city to pay the bill.
That's part of it, but the AT&T line was not identified by our engineering at the time. So that's what puts us kind of on the hook for the project.
So, uh, with regard to engineering, Hasslet engineered that project themselves?
No, the project had an engineering firm, but our engineer was supposed to locate all utilities, notify all of them to move their utilities.
And they failed to do so on that. That's where the responsibility comes in, Councilman Mayor Hor.
All right. Do we know the name of the engineering firm we used to locate the lines? I hope they're.
No, it was our employee. It was our employee at that time.
All right.
It was a direct employee of the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
I've, I've got a quick question. So the, the budgeted amount was eighty thousand and the total bill initially came in at seventy-five. So does this thirty-two thousand, seven hundred account for those five thousand that were not used for the, for this project?
Martha. That budget, um, the remaining five thousand expired at the end of that budget year as it was not encumbered at that time. Because at the time the project was completed, we weren't aware of the additional fees. So that budget was lapsed. So that's why we're asking to approve the whole amount of the change order.
It's not a pleasant thing. Um, at the end of the day, we, it, we always try to search who was at play in this and the best answer we can come up with right now was Hasslet.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately. So, any other questions, council? So I would, I'm asking for a motion for approval of the thirty thousand.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the contingency funds for change order number two on Keller Hasslet Road Bridge Project in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Here's motion made, uh, for the, uh, taking the, uh, change order number two on Kessler, Keller, Kel, on Keller Hasslet Road Bridge Project in amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars from contingency fund. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, a second?
There is a second. Any further discussion? All right, council, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, in the chambers, it's all in favor and Councilmember Ricketts online, I see, is in favor. There's none opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you, council. Eight B, executive overview, view of the budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and budget adoption for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Uh, Ms. Lamb.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and this is just a brief overview to summarize the two ordinances that you have in your packet tonight for amending the current year budget and the adoption of the next year budget. Starting with the amendments, the, um, when we, when you last saw the budget as proposed, uh, there have been a few changes um, to some of the current year revenues, mostly expenditures, but, um, what we usually do in this process, we get through the end of August, we take a new look at how our revenue estimates have been coming in and in most every case for the major funds, uh, revenues are coming in above what we had already projected. So, uh, we tried to revise those estimates for revenues. Um, expenditures, as you know, are, um, department heads are usually really good about staying under their budgets and, and when they're in danger of going over, they come to you for amendments, just like we did on item prior to this. And so we didn't have a lot of changes in our expenditures. Most of the, uh, changes were related to, uh, specific items and some of the, uh, moving around of some of our departments and some of the technology purchases that we made. The adopted budget that you'll see later already has these revised beginning balances uh, from the amendments have been run through so that when you're looking at your adopted budget ordinance, those beginning balances, um, do include the, um, revised amendment numbers as well. So I just wanted to provide you with this brief overview about how that all, uh, comes into play. Yeah, there are a few changes in the adopted from the last time you saw, uh, the budget. Most of them were just, um, were some last-minute, uh, smaller items uh, for some, uh, pay levels and for some of the employees that we're looking for. Uh, some of the, um, projects that as we were going through, there was a couple of extra projects that have been added to Fund Nineteen.
We're, we're getting off into the next item.
Okay. Um, so that's a summary of the changes and the, the right-hand column uh, on this report for the summary just shows where, um, the major funds, what we call the major funds are starting and ending, um, upon approval of the budget.
I wanted to point out, council, is that, uh, this is good news for you. You have more, I mean, incorporating, you know, the late, uh, here towards the end, the actual, uh, revenues that we have, uh, there's an increase in funds on every line item. So this is all good news to you. Um, and this was purely an executive overview. The following items will get into more specifics. So unless there's a question on this one item, we'll go on to eight B. Is there any question on this one item? All right, eight big, or excuse me, eight C, rather. Eight C is discuss, consider, and act on ordinance amending the city's budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two. Marcy, would you go through and hit the highlights of what changed?
Yes, sir. Um, once again, the highlights and across all funds are the revised revenue estimates, uh, most particularly, um, sales tax and our permits and the general fund and the water and sewer fund, um, our user fees for charges for water and wastewater and the EDCs, both the EDCs and the transportation sales tax fund. The major reason for the increases there, once again, due to sales tax. Um, there's really, uh, those are pretty much the major changes besides the, um, water impact fees, sewer impact fees, um, went up just a little bit. Most of the other changes that are, uh, related to changes in the general fund are changes in the capital projects fund, those transfers for the additional projects that we added in Fund Nineteen, uh, transferring money from the general fund to fund those. And, um, some of the amendments that are in here, uh, you have seen previously, but they're, they're just now being added to the system and I included them in this amendment so that you could see all of them, such as the project twenty twenty-five, um, items, some of the, um, the Atmos relocation for utilities on the Hasslet Parkway project, some of those items you've already seen, but they're included in this amendment. Are there any questions that you have?
Yes, council, I mean, any, anything that you see here, if you have a question, though. Uh, Councilmember Ricketts, we're not, uh, forgetting you're out there. Do you have any questions? If you have none, then I would take a motion, please.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the city's budget for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-one and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion is made to, uh, approve the ordinance amending the city's budget, city budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? If there is none, okay, take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in the chambers, uh, Councilman Ricketts is in favor. The vote is unanimous. Motion passes. Eight D. Hold a public hearing on proposed tax rate for fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-two and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Lamb.
Council, under your previous action, you adopted a proposed tax rate uh, for a total of point two-nine-six-nine-five-seven. Uh, that includes a, um, M and O rate of point two-seven-two-six-eight-two and a debt rate of point zero-two-four-two-seven-five. Uh, once again, for the total, point two-nine-six-nine-five-seven. Um, so tonight you're having a hearing on the tax rate. Uh, this tax rate, um, will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's tax rate. And the tax rate will effectively be raised by seven point nine-nine percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a hundred thousand dollar home by approximately thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Are there any questions that you have? Um, due to the previous action, you can adopt a rate lower than this, however, you cannot adopt a rate higher.
Very good. All right, uh, I now open this, uh, proposed tax rate for fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-two to September thirty, twenty twenty-three, open it for a public hearing at eight eighteen P. M. Does anyone have any comment they would like to make to the city council with regard to our proposed rate? Anybody online that would like to make any comment to our proposed rate?
No, sir.
All right, there is none online and there are none in the chambers, therefore I close the public hearing. Item eight E, discuss, consider, and act regarding an ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-two to September thirty, twenty twenty-three. Um, this budget will, uh, raise property taxes, it will raise your taxes, uh, by a total amount of seven hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. It is a twenty-six point zero-six percent increase from the year before. Of that amount, seventy-five point four percent of that amount, which is five hundred and seventy-three thousand and sixty-one dollars comes from new, uh, uh, revenue from new properties added to the tax roll. A consequence of either new residential or new, uh, business, particularly industrial warehousing. Uh, Ms. Lamb, anything to add to that?
No, sir.
All right then, uh, council, what you have before you is an ordinance adopting this, uh, budget for the fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-two, September thirty to September thirty, twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions? If not, then I, could I have a motion, please?
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance for the budget of the fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-two to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion is made to approve the ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-two to September thirty, twenty twenty-three. Is there a second?
Mayor, hold the second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All right, there is none, so I'm called for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous in the chambers as well as Councilman Ricketts, uh, votes in favor as well. It's unanimous vote. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Going on to item eight F. Consider, discuss, and act regarding an ordinance ratifying ad valorem property tax revenue reflected in the adopted fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-two to September thirty, twenty twenty-three annual budget. Um, you have on the agenda, uh, some cited, uh, numbers. I'll let, uh, Ms. Lamb to go over those and summarize that.
Okay, once again, um, this is the tax rate that, um, you all had proposed by previous action. This is the tax rate that, um, the budget was prepared, the final budget that you just approved included revenues projected using this tax rate. The total tax rate, uh, proposed is point two-nine-six-nine-five-seven per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
Council, you have any questions? All right, the, but again, you have an ordinance in front of you ratifying the ad valorem property tax for this budget, coming budget year. Uh, if there's no further discussion, I would certainly entertain a motion, please.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance ratifying ad valorem property tax revenue reflected in the adopted fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-two to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three annual budget.
Motion is made to approve the ordinance ratifying the ad valorem property tax revenue reflected in the adopted fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-two to September thirty, twenty twenty-three annual budget. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Aye.
There's four in the chamber and Councilman Ricketts online, votes in favor as well. The vote is unanimous and motion passes. Thank you, council. Eight G. Discuss, consider, and act on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of concurrence to Prairie Industry Holdings DBA Trabant's request for foreign trade zone designation for the premises of two eight-zero South Inomodle Parkway. Uh, is Mister Griffith here? Mister Griffith wants to come up to the podium? Uh, we don't need the long version. It'll be the, to the point, okay? So let me, let me briefly describe to the council. I visited with, um, Mister Griffith and also with, um, the, uh, with the plant as well as one of the chief officers of Trabant. What is a free trade zone? Designation. It is a designation which permits, it, what's the, what's the, it permits the company not be subject to ad valorem tax to capital equipment that goes in that building as well as materials that go in that building, but those materials stay ninety days or less, in my own point.
Well, first of all, thanks for the opportunity, Mayor, Councilor, before you. Um, I, I'm going to give you the real basic definition.
Please.
In our, uh, material, it's a restricted, restricted access site in a, based on customer's port of entry. Um, and it's really a territory that's considered outside the domestic economy. And so, uh, it's as though the product that comes in is not in the marketplace, therefore it would not be subject uh, the duty rate to modify that product. It is specific to the product itself. Um, material, the, the property, such as the building, the real estate the building, uh, sits on, that is still all subject to, uh, ad valorem tax jurisdiction. Uh, the benefit is companies can utilize the program to defer duty, therefore they pay duty close to the point of sale, which generates additional cash flow for the organization so that they may bring in more product or expand, grow, et cetera. Uh, those are some of the, the basics that, that they have. So, I don't know if we can keep going. I could go on for days with this stuff. It's kind of interesting to me, but I don't want to.
You know what? If you go on for days, it will not be approved.
You did, you did have to postpone tonight.
So that's the salient point.
Yes, um, really and truly, the foreign trade zone program was established in nineteen thirty-four, the federal program,
and it was, it was put in place to help get the economy American contract up. And, uh, it, it's beneficial for companies looking to invest in certain communities that they're looking uh, plant fruits in a community that is support foreign trade. It truly does bring about, uh, growth opportunities for. Um, with respect to the equipment you mentioned that goes to the warehouse or into the foreign trade zone specifically, companies can actually bring, uh, parts and pieces of their, say, their conveyor systems, their automation systems, et cetera, and, uh, assemble those in that space and they actually get what they call inverted duty. So in a foreign trade zone, when you bring two pieces together, they, even for different countries, it actually has a, a separate HTS code, but think of it as a queue number, uh, in terms of return. So that's also a benefit, but also they end up having to pay.
So what I have learned, Trabant is a U.S. company. Their headquarters in South Carolina.
Uh, North Carolina.
North Carolina, excuse me. And, uh, this helps them, I'll say there is no outright benefit to Hasslet upfront. Uh, there is a benefit to a U.S. company competitiveness, which I would be in support of.
And I would add to that, this is their only operation of this kind. So, uh, I'm proud of it. I'm, I'm sure everyone has a proud to have something like that, sorry.
I think they've got the fundamental overview of a free trade zone. And council, please ask any questions you may.
Just a quick question. So I'm assuming all these products are being exported. Is that correct?
They actually are, uh, going to be eventually shipped out to the domestic marketplace. What's interesting about this facility is they're bringing bulk Lego parts, so their product is Lego. But like you guys already know, and they will actually ship this to another foreign trade zone down the highway of this distribution facility and that is shipped out to the.
And that's at the point that it gets, it gets taxed, correct? Once it gets into the U.S. market.
This facility, what they do specifically is they receive large boxes of the same tiny little Lego part and they custom package.
Right.
And that's what they do. They are a custom package company for Lego.
Absolutely.
And then that gets sent to another warehouse in the local area, not in Hasslet, outside of Hasslet, rather. And then from that point, it gets distributed to the retail sites.
That's correct. So when you shop in a Target or a Walmart and see the box of shelves, that's the ultimate destination. Let's think about this, that actually for the facility last week, that automation system is pretty fat. Complex it is, but these are the products we're all shopping for on the shelf. They're birthday. But ultimately, yes, it does get shipped to another distribution account. This is technically falls under a production slash manufacturing category, even though there's not smoke there.
Uh, this is not the first free trade zone in Hasslet, Texas, is it?
This is the first one that I'm, I have actually processed since I've been doing it since 2018. So of all the companies and just to give you a better introduction myself, we, I'm with Phil Wood. We actually manage the foreign trade zone on behalf of a lot of four door Inc. It is a nonprofit grantee ship. And so since I've been doing this, I've not, we have not had a foreign trade.
Since 2018, but prior to, I mean, are you?
There have been.
Okay, so in Hasslet, we have other companies that have this designation.
Not that are active at this point.
Okay.
So sometimes they go inactive, sometimes they're active.
I know there were some.
That was, that was my question. So thank you for that. One thing you mentioned is that approximately four hundred and fifty employees now, but you hope to almost double that this time next year with employees, so possible job opportunities.
Sure. Trabant, you know, they have expansion plans and if they are at full capacity, they would anticipate up to seven hundred employees. They're currently around four hundred, four fifty mark right now. That obviously depends on the growth pattern, but they, they project out to have. And I may add the, on the taxes, the inventory taxes on, it's on the product itself that we make control up there. We did a snapshot of estimate of the core tax that would be based on a ten million dollar inventory value.
No, that's, that's it right there. Thank you.
Mayor, I got a question, question on this. So is Truant, are y'all, are y'all owning the facility or y'all just leasing still?
Uh, so I'm not actually with Trabant, but Trabant is leasing the facility. They're in the warehouse. They're located at two eighty Intermodal. They're in building one and they are occupying about forty eight which approximately three hundred and thirty one thousand per feet and boundary of the zone will also the trailer park in the front yard. Okay, thank you, sir.
I was going to let you continue. Projected on a ten million dollar actual inventory, it would be seventy thousand that the city would actually get in the ad valorem tax, correct?
So I'm going to pull this up on my screen so I can see it a little bit better. We have an example at ten million and the property tax based on going off TAD twenty twenty two TAD values, you're at value of the land improvement about forty million dollars, which is about a hundred and fourteen thousand property tax revenue. If you did not have foreign trades on the inventory was subject to the inventory tax, it would be twenty eight thousand. But that's really all that you missed out. There's other economic benefits. So the, if you go down here, it shows the fifty five thousand six hundred and ninety five dollars. That's your total property tax revenue of the hundred and fourteen. I apologize. That was of the entire build, the property, so their space. Forty percent of that. To clarify that for you. And there's also an error, Google aerial exhibit on your packet. It does show the highlighted yellow space covering our building one. Just as a reminder, it's going to be the question half that entire building. You can specify that. The request on the table from a lot of quartering on behalf of Trabant, a concurrence letter in support of the foreign trade zone designation, specify that Trabant typically, we're not asking for the entire site.
So on the, towards the bottom of your report, just above the black line that says total property tax revenue with regard to inventory is the very last line says with a full trade zone in operation, the, what Hasslet would be forfeiting with the free trade zone agreement is, or letter of no objection, is those values of twenty eight thousand, three twenty three and the future growth of twenty five thousand dollars, future annual tax revenue of seventy thousand, eight oh seven. And that's where in lies, you know, there, there is, yes, there will be some employee added. Typically, those folks in those environments don't get the lunchtime to go visit higher establishments. They'll bring their lunch. And, but I just wanted to be clear there and I, first off, I recommend passing this, but there is no clear benefit to the city to do so, but I recommend it on the basis of making a US company more competitive.
I guess the last question I have is that does the resolution have a timeframe or is it, is it?
It's a.
Thank you.
One more question. Where is the warehouse that it goes to after, after the packets are complete?
So it's generally at the locate, the intersection of eight twenty and thirty five. So that it's on the, what would be northwest quadrant.
I'm just wondering because I'm familiar with the free trade zone and I import steel products. So when you come to a free trade zone, the minute that you import into the US, you're the importer record, that's when you pay the duty. In this case, it seems that it's just being offset to another location where someone else is benefiting from these, the added value to the product. Is there any plans to open a warehouse in Hasslet that maybe would do that and that we could benefit from that sales tax?
I, I, I think it's, well, in a foreign trade zone, the sales tax is eliminated, mostly on the actual product itself. So obviously on sales. Yeah. I think there is. One of the things that is great about warehouse in a district this time, it's other groups tend to follow to be close by, whether they have equipment they're selling, maybe it's still product or certain parts that a distributor wants to closer by. If this is a successful platform spot here, I can't speak to their growth, but it does open up that potential to sustain more growth, positive environment for.
Well, that's an interesting issue raised. Let me ask, is that with regard to sales tax, I mean, so say Trabant takes it and moves it into another warehouse where that will be distributed to the retail site that where the point of sale will be in the sales tax collected at the point of sale and not from a distribution warehouse, because that would be a wholesale?
That's correct. In the case of steel products, for example, it arrives in a free trade zone for whatever reason. If there's a quota and they need to delay it under a month where the quota allows for that material to enter the country with no tariff, and that's the reason to put it in a free trade zone. Another reason is you assemble parts, but then you export them to another country. So you're only assembling in the free trade zone, but it's never staying in that country. For example, you get parts from different countries, they assemble it and then they ship it out to another country. Because it does that, it doesn't get, it doesn't get a tariff attached to it. You don't pay a tax for it. But it, once it enters the US at that point of entry is when you pay those tariffs. And then you obviously, you know, benefit from the sales tax revenue. So what I'm saying is, okay, maybe in the future, consider Hasslet for that to be done in Hasslet so we can benefit from that.
My question is, is a hundred percent of the inventory value that's housed at this facility, does it fall under this exemption?
The product itself that's being imported? Yeah. So some warehouse facilities will only designate a portion of their facility for foreign trade product coming in. Some facilities do the entire house. In this case, it's.
The entire, correct.
So any capital equipment that would have been subject to ad valorem?
Yeah, so you're referring to conveyor systems, things of that nature? Yeah, that, that's actually different. So the way that works in the foreign trade zone, you can actually defer that duty with that equipment or what they call an inverted duty. So it changes basically the, if you, you know, bring multiple parts.
So let me ask you this, for the equipment that's sitting there already, prior to this designation, is it still subject?
My understanding of Texas state law is subject to the capital.
And will remain so after this designation.
That's the best my understanding, sir. And I'd be happy to send, you know, further information to the council if you'd like.
If you would clarify that for us.
Absolutely.
Or just, you know, fire application.
Absolutely. No problem. So I haven't put y'all to sleep yet on this topic, so this is good.
Now, just Mayor, I got one question on, I was looking at the resolution that's on here and with Truant, is there a link on the time with their lease in this particular building? God knows there's really no, there's no date preferences listed for the resolution.
Correct. I believe they are currently under a five-year lease as we sit here today. You were asking about the lease?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I believe they're on a five-year lease, but I'd be happy to provide more information of the terms of that lease if you would like. I do not have that at my disposal at this time.
That's an excellent question. I, I have a question. So if they should decide to terminate that lease, does this designation terminate as well?
That's correct. This particular FTZ designation is specific for Trabant.
Very good. Mr. Page put that resolution together for us. You got any comments?
So the resolution simply directs the mayor to put together and sign off on that letter of concurrent for this, that we'll just need a vote on whether or not you want to authorize the mayor to do so.
Any further questions, counsel? And if not, then I would ask for a motion to one effect or the other.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of concurrence to Prairie Industries Holding DBA Trabant's request for foreign trade zone designation for the premises at two eighty South Intermodal Parkway.
Motion is made to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of concurrence to Prairie Industries Holdings DBA Trabant's request for foreign trade zone designation for the premises of two eighty South Intermodal Parkway. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second it.
There is a second. Any further discussion? If not, I call for the vote. All in favor? Four in the chamber, four. Uh, Councilmember Ricketts also is in favor. It's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate your time.
Item HA, discuss, consider, and act on a community facilities agreement, CFA, between the city of Hasslet and TM Sweetgrass LLC for Sweetgrass Edition Phase One B. Is anybody from Sweetgrass here? There's no one here. Both Mr., a number of us were involved, staff, myself and also Mr. Page. This particular agreement is, is favorable to Hasslet very specifically. It addresses the situation that we've had in other subdivisions with delayed fencing and landscaping of gas wells. With this CFA, it is explicitly understood, there will be no permits issued to build a house until all of phase one, phase one, not just one B, A, or C, but all phase one gas wells are fenced and landscaped. Then, after that's been done and verified, building permits will be issued for phase one B. Uh, that is a very notable point of this particular CFA. Is there any staff you want making comments with regard to the CFA? Uh, I will say that the developer, Mr. Brett Patty, goes in agreement with this CFA, does not contest it. Mr. Page, any comments?
As the mayor alluded to, we've had issues before where certain developers aren't fulfilling their requirements to screen gas wells. With the Sweetgrass development, the initial development agreement called for the, the planned development, district zoning called for all of the gas wells to be properly screened. And so what this does is adding a section requiring, like Mayor said, for all of those in phase one to be screened before any further permit will be issued as a part of this subsection, phase one B. And the agreement also restricts a few other issues with insurance, other language like that.
Yes, the insurance previous agreements only required subcontractors to have insurance. This agreement requires the developer and subcontractors to carry full insurance throughout the project. Is there any questions? Yes, ma'am. Do you want to say something?
We have a speaker sign up for this item when you're ready.
Uh, yes, who, okay, hold on just a minute. Uh, let me get finished with the presentation. All right, is any questions to that? Okay, and you have a speaker on that?
Yes, sir. Chris Halsey.
Oh, I think I know you.
Chris Halsey, two zero zero three, Highway one fifty six, Hasslet. And I was reading through this eight, eight yesterday, and I was so impressed with it. The community facilities agreement for Sweetgrass Edition Phase One B is a masterpiece. The wording and coverage protect the interests of the cities of Hasslet, and I applaud the authors. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Is, uh, is there any other speakers requesting?
No, sir.
All right then. Well, thank you. All right, let's go to the discussion, consideration, and action, counsel. Any questions, inquiry or anything?
Just one question. In regards to other existing wells that aren't in this particular ordinance or this particular, I guess it's an ordinance. If they're not complying now, is there an ordinance or is someone that's going to enforce it to come make them do this, the landscaping and the fencing?
Uh, there are other wells that we are actively, as well as this developer addressing, as well as the operators of those wells are being pursued to resolve those issues. We could not, I'll say legitimately impose on another developments, though maybe the same owners, coupling of those gas wells with this CFA for phase one B. Uh, but that is being pursued. But that is being pursued right now on a separate item, and that's separate from this item here, is separate from this CFA. If there is no other questions, I would entertain a motion. I do request your approval of this CFA.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the Community Facilities Agreement, CFA, between the City of Hazlet and TM Sweetgrass LLC for Sweetgrass Edition Phase 1B.
Motion is made to approve the Community Facilities Agreement, CFA, between the City of Hazlet and TM Sweetgrass LLC for Sweetgrass Edition Phase 1B. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? There is none. I'll ask for the vote then. All in favor? Uh, it, Mr. Ricketts, okay. It's unanimous, 5-4. Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Item 8I, Discuss/Consider an Act on Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool of Trustees Election. All right, I will get to the point here, counsel. Does anybody know any of these candidates? If you do not, I recommend that we do not vote. And so if you should agree with me on that, I would ask that you, someone make a motion that we do not vote on this election.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I make a motion that we do not vote on the election of the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees Election.
Motion is made not to vote on this Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees election. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey has a second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Now, I call for the vote. All in favor? And Mr. Councilman Rickett votes 8I as well. It's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 8J, this is postponed from last month, September 6, or rather, last meeting, not last month. September 6, 2022, is Discuss/Consider an Act on Board Commission and Economic Development Corporation's Membership. And particularly what this was before you was to address two items. One is the membership itself, and particularly, do you have alternates or not on your boards? The other item, should you decide to have alternates, is when do they sit as a regular member? Those were the two items that were, this item was addressing. So it's to you, counsel.
I want to first say I appreciate the information that was, we were given with all the board's attendance and when the alternates actually voted. Looking at that, I also want to thank all the citizens who wrote emails and made phone calls to give their input for or against alternates. At this time, I feel that I agree, the additional voices for Hazlet and the opportunity to continue communities, you know, our community involved in civic service, I would say we keep alternates and we let them fill in when there's an absence. And I based that decision a lot on the attendance, looking at type A, an alternate voted 55% of the time, type B, 80% of the time. Planning and zoning, 40% of the time. So I do feel they're being, as the attorney general said, they're an applied power that I think is necessary and promotes our city, so.
All right then. Any other discussion on that?
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
While I agree with Member Morrell that they voted that much, there was a quorum present for the majority. In fact, only one time on the EDC A was there not a quorum present, and only one time on B was there. Other than that, each time, there's been a quorum present. So it's kind of misleading a little bit when you just look at the voting. And then we still have, you know, the park board needs alternates. And it's nice to have alternates on the park board because they have a lot of activities, and the same with the library board, and they have a lot of activities that they need to volunteer for. But as far as the necessity, because someone's absent, I only found two times on all of these boards that that occurred.
Hey, mayor, looking at the, the one thing I asked for before was this scorecard on when folks, board members, alternates, whatever, absent, present, voting or not. You know, if you're just looking at EDC boards, I mean, you know, it stands out, you know, how many absentees you have, or just regular members. And the thing is, it's just like city council. Things come up in people's personal lives that can't control, you can't control, you know, various things. So I think alternates are needed to be available for that. And with alternates, they should be engaged, because one of the arguments before about not having alternates is, are they really engaged on what the business at hand is in a various order? My experience with TMZ is the alternates attended as much as regular members. And they were engaged in the conversations, the dialogue, the presentation. So they were versed in decisions that came up. And I said, if you go through and you highlight the absentees of regular board members, it's pretty evident that, you know, there's.
Well, let me ask you, okay, you say you highlight that. I think an issue is, one, I mean, with the alternates, some of the confusion, and I've seen it in some, in some board meetings. I don't attend every board meeting, but some that I have attended, is that when does the alternate serve? If you have a quorum up here on that board, and just because one of the regular members was not here, such as, you know, if, if Councilman Ricketts were not able to attend online, but this council doesn't have alternates, but yet we have not canceled a meeting because we don't have alternates, or we always make a quorum. So my question is, and has been, if you desire the alternates, their service, when they serve, has not been defined?
Our current bylaws, as you handed it, sent them to us, is they only vote, they only just vote when there's an absence. So it is defined, it's just they, they only vote when there's an absent regular member.
But so, but my question is that those regular members are, they're the active discussion, carrying the discussion. Also, is only active members that are privy to executive session items? Is there an ice cream truck outside? I like Klondike. Thank you. Anyway, is, I, I'm just going to look at the, did perform that study for you from the local government code and ordinances, and the local government code seems very, it is consistent. There's only two boards in the local government code that has alternates, one of which we don't even have, standards committee. And also anywhere it states that it's, you know, it cites when that alternate member will be participating as a regular member. And I, I'm just of the opinion that to have, just because a board member doesn't show up, that alternate member that doesn't give a, should not, in my opinion, be the criteria for an alternate member to sit as a full member. But when it comes to if we have alternates, and it's a matter of whether it's a quorum or not, absolutely. If you have alternates, then I would think, I'm, my opinion is that's the criteria to have the board member sit as a regular member.
So just to be clear that I understand you, if, if they're coming, if they are needed as a quorum, then, then that, that meets a criteria. But if they're needed, if someone is absent, they don't meet that criteria in your mind of being.
Well, the quorum is, the quorum of the board is made.
Right. The quorum is made, but somebody is absent, and I'm an alternate, therefore, my duties aren't needed.
Correct.
See that, and that's what I don't agree with, because I feel that they're on the board, which, I mean, we, I mean, it's okay to disagree. But I feel like if they're going to volunteer their time to be a part of something where there's alternates with the hopes of maybe getting into a regular position, which I know that on the information that was given, that we received to people, I believe, yeah, would, would like to be considered for full membership that were alternate. So they, they clearly have started off as an alternate and now are working their way up. I think it's just that opportunity for them to have that, that voice.
Okay, I understand, understand. Let me ask this, in, in whatever motion anybody makes, I would let, you know, ask one, that your motion, whether alternates are not, if you should propose alternates, include when they serve? When do they sit as a full member on a board?
I got a comment to that. I mean, I looked at this thing pretty, pretty dead. If you have a quorum, then the alternative, alternative members should not vote. They're only needed when you, when you need a quorum, and then they're allowed to vote. Now, if we have a serious absentee problem, we have the, as a committee here, we have the choice to boot them out and maybe get one of these alternates in a permanent position. But in my opinion, we should not have alternate members for that reason. So if we have an absentee problem, then that's when we, you know, pull the citizens and get someone in that is going to be serious and attend these meetings.
Understood.
No alternate at all, or just no alternate unless there's a quorum needed?
Well, two things, I think. If we're going to have alternates, then they only serve when the quorum is needed, and they can only vote when a quorum is needed. If there's five members and, you know, one is missing, you're not going to pull an alternate in there and have him vote, because you have a quorum already and you don't need them, in my opinion. Like I said, if we have an absentee problem with a particular person, then we can, you know, have a meeting, infer that we're going to get rid of them, and, and then maybe get that alternated. That's just my opinion. I don't know what the other members think of that.
So, okay. So what I'm hearing also, there is an expectation, though we appreciate everybody, you know, the people that volunteer, there is an expectation to fill these boards, of performance. There is, I mean, it's, this is not, I mean, they are our advisory committee for those specific areas, and we rely on that heavily. We pass ordinances and things based on their input. So it's serious business. There is, you know, thank you very much for doing it, but guess what? There's, it's a job, and there's responsibility with it. Kind of hear what I'm hearing from you.
If I can just say something. So as to the motions for tonight, I just want to kind of go over what the options are at the moment. So as of now, we have our ordinance, what they have, we have alternates on certain boards and their duties and when they are allowed to vote. And so if no majority vote, if no action is taken, or if no majority vote on any action is taken today, then the status quo will. And so if you are wanting to make any motion, dictate probably what, whether or not you want to have alternates on these boards, and if you want to remove the alternates, then we'll come back at a later date with an ordinance provision as well to reflect that. And then, that second part of the motion, mayor talked about, there is a change in duties that you want, as in when they can or cannot vote. Also make sure that, that would be in the ordinance.
I'm not clear. So if we want to keep alternates, then we don't change anything or make a motion.
Correct. No motion is required if you want to keep everything as.
Okay. If we want to eliminate alternates, then a motion is required. Then there's a second issue. If we want there a quorum to be the criteria for alternates to be able to vote, that's a second motion or a second?
That would be, because, because that would be something that we would need to change the ordinance as well. And so I'm kind of having a hard time seeing how we can make that change without there being an ordinance. Well, but I can see the council being able to remove, like, people from the board, civic members from the board, but I'm not sure about changing duties. That would be something for.
Okay, so we're talking about two separate motions, possibly?
Yeah, possible.
Let me go ahead and, I, I will say this, is that if, if you want to remove alternates, if anybody wants to remove the alternates, make your motion to remove the alternates. You can do this, break this into two motions. Okay, you remove the alternates. If you remit, if the vote is not successful, so that means you keep alternates. But then, a second motion can be made to define when the alternates serve. If a motion is made to not have alternates, and that should pass, then there is no definition of when they serve. There's a request to speak. Okay, in just a moment, please. So, any counsel, any further discussion? Otherwise, then I'll have the speaker come up.
Yeah, I mean, mayor, I'd get a, just clarification, you know, not, not deeper ad alternate. But if we, the part about the alternate sitting and voting, I think we need, you know, be real clear with the terminology.
Yes.
Because I think if you have an alternate on a board, my opinion is they should be actively engaged in discussions, conversation, presentation. I think it comes down to when does that alternate vote? Is it when there's a quorum needed, and he needs to fill some position to make a quorum to board? Or is it, you know, just because a board member not there?
Well, I, I let me say this. I have seen situations where an alternate member will carry the day when there's a full board present. And I'm sitting there, and that's just not right. If that's the case.
It's not right for them to be able to add to the discussion.
I'm talking, the, the, the full board, regular members should be in the active discussion of an item.
But currently, our, our expectation for the state has it is everybody, including the alternates, are actively involved in that discussion. Is that what you're saying? That shouldn't be the case?
Uh, that's correct. And I've seen it where an alternate would just consistently, one meeting to the next, lead the, you know, and start, well, why is that person an alternate?
Right. I mean.
Why aren't we assessing the performance of the membership and replace what needs to be replaced?
I agree with you. I don't think, well, I don't think any one person on any board should, you know, monopolize the conversation. But I think the alternate needs to be valued as part of that board. And if they're not allowed to discuss and contribute, I don't know if we'll get as many, as much input for people to serve. Other than the application we received.
What's the difference between an alternate and a non-alternate?
Well, according to.
What's the value? What's the, someone saying, I'll be a full member, I'll volunteer. What's the difference?
Kind of like what Mayor Pretin-Burrell said. I know with parks, board, and libraries, for a lot of times, volunteer and input. I think for other people, like when I served as an alternate, it was just to kind of get, it was only a available position. It was a way for me to learn the process and to get involved, and then move my way up to a regular member, which is, which I said, which two people clearly want to do now. Other than what we received Friday from the secretary, I've never seen anybody say they want to be an alternate only, which, that's fine. If they clearly know what they want to do, I'm okay with that. But I think everybody says, I want to serve on this board, and then we just kind of fill them in where they're needed. But I feel like everybody's equal.
We can, yeah.
Equal in regards for the discussion and the contribute, contributing to the board. But voting, yeah, they only vote if there's an absentee. Or if we decide a quorum is needed. I do think they should be able to be valued.
Interesting concept, you know, that I, oh, you know, I look at it from all the different perspectives. So here's a scenario. And it's real. They say, give an alternate member and consistently steer this board. But yet they're, they are not going to vote. And I'm sitting, okay, this is a little, it's, this, something's not right about this. Is why one? You see what I'm trying to express?
I do see what you're saying, but they're not voting. But I, and I also, I value diversity of thought. So even though we're not all agreeing, having those, that different input, I think is important. But if they're not voting, then I don't know what the harm they're truly doing, unless, like you said, they're monopolizing the conversation.
You know, maybe they should be the chair of the board. And we get the chair out. You know, and that's where, you know, hey, they're, we're here for a reason. Every one of us are volunteers. You know, and, you know, it's work. Volunteer to do it, though.
And Mayor, to your scenario there, I think that's where, you know, and especially if you witnessed, I think that's where, you know, the pyramid of a particular board needs to make sure he's the one guiding the meeting. That's what, that's the role of their person of a board, is to make sure that it's not, for lack of a better, you know, railroaded by a particular.
Understood. All right. You know, I know we can discuss this all night long. Does anybody have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, there's a speaker.
Cindy Laird.
Ms. Laird, please come up.
My name is Cindy Laird, and I live at 219 Main Street in Halffoot. I've been here a long time, and I have served as an alternate and on several of the boards in the Halffoot, city of Halffoot. I have seen the value of having people come and just to see if this is what really fits for them. There's times when you wonder what the boards do. And you don't always have time to come to all the meetings, but you still want to know what's going on. If you commit to being an alternate and you become more involved in it, you understand the workings of it. It's not just, we're not rubber stamping everything that comes through. And there's a lot of discussion, and when you get different opinions, you see different sides of things. My way is not always the right way, but not as everybody else's. But when you have somebody maybe with a different background or from a different area, it makes a difference in how they want to approach a problem or a suggestion. I've been on the Park Board, I've been on several times. I've been on the P and Z. I've served at the, I volunteer at the library. I'm very involved in the community. And the more people we can get involved in the city, the more, just the more activities that we'll be able to do. I know that several of the people that I know wrote emails telling you the value that the alternates bring to the boards. And I would like to, I would really like for you to sincerely consider that. I don't think that we need to get rid of any alternates. Now, whether they vote or not, that's entirely up to y'all. I don't think they should vote unless there's an absence or if you can't make a quorum. But if they're coming to the meetings and they're sharing their ideas and their viewpoints, and they've committed to the time involved in it, then I think that their vote should be valued. Most of the time, I've seen alternates move into positions in the, in the boards and the different boards that I've been on. And it just gives them an opportunity to see what's going on. It's really invaluable, I think, for Halffoot to get as many perspectives as they can. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Sarah Nembou. Hello, Council. My name is Sarah Nembou. I live at 2115 FM 156 South. And I wanted to just reiterate what Cindy was saying. And I wanted to bring up something that happened this evening that I was quite impressed by, for an example. So Mr. Councilmember Nahara was offering some very wonderful information from the Trade Service. And if you guys didn't know that information prior, I think the information that he brought was quite beneficial to that conversation that you guys had in regards to that information. So when I, I'm currently the chair of the Park Board, and I know that that board doesn't apply to this sort of ruling that you're discussing. But I wanted to also point out that I also started out as an alternate. And I was able to vote a few times. And as the chair now, I agree with Councilmember Horak. The chair should also take that control of the room. But I think it's kind of unfortunate that they're being monopolized. I also would like to point out that if you are not a voting member, I still would have valued your input because I thought that was very, very good, because I don't know anything about that. And so it's helpful to have people on your team when you're guiding your members on making decisions, that they may not vote, but they may have some information that you don't have before. So I also would be in favor of keeping an alternate, whether you guys decide to vote or not. Of course, that's up to you if they're a voting member, when they're a voting member. There are some ordinances, bylaws that are already out there that kind of talk about when they move up and who you consider next and things like that. So I don't know if y'all were also considering those. But there are some that are already out there, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring my packet with me that have been approved over the years and altered. And so I just thought that I would give my opinion, that working with Cindy over the past four years. When she started out, she was also an alternate. And it's, we can't really live without Cindy when she's not there. We'd love to have her there. We'd love to have her a part of the team. And so she's now a voting member. She's been the co-chair and things like that. But I wanted to give my suggestion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nembou. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right, Council. Any other? Oh, I, Mr. Thiford, I didn't know if you were going to share something with us. All right, then. Let me, not an easy topic, but let me go ahead and break this out into two parts. Does anyone have a motion with regard to alternates?
I have a motion, but I need a little bit of help from our attorney. So this is what I want to do. This is what I proposed, that we keep the alternates, but they can only vote when a quorum is needed. And you said to address, you know, to change, to, I guess, vote someone out.
Excuse me, if that's what I was leading to. One is address the alternates. If you want to leave the alternates as is, then you could go ahead and just make a motion on when they sit.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I make a motion to allow the alternates to vote, but only when a quorum is needed.
A motion is made for alternates to allow the alternate set as a regular member and vote only when a quorum is needed. Did I get that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a second to that?
Mayor Holsey, I second it.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Is clarification that you want?
Yeah, I want clarification because we were talking about before making two motions.
Okay, so Councilmember Nahara is making a motion on when an alternate member may sit as a regular member and vote only. So that presumes there's no change unless another member here makes a motion to not have alternate members. But we will consider his motion right now is when the alternate member sits.
I just want to make sure we're clear on.
That's only, that's the only motion.
And just to clarify too, sits as a voting member, but is able to still sit at the dais to participate and discuss? Or do they have to sit out in the audience and then?
As I understand it, and is that if they are feeling the need for a quorum, they come up here and sit as a regular member.
But if there's already a quorum present, they would not participate in any discussion and they would not sit as on the board?
All right, so that's embodied in your motion is, I want to repeat the motion to clarify all aspects of it. Is that motion is made to have an alternate member sit as a regular member only when a quorum is required, then they sit as a regular member for that meeting and entitled to vote and participate in the discussion. Otherwise, they do not participate in discussion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the.
I have one more clarification on that. So if I came to a meeting and I was an alternate, I could still request to speak?
First off, I would like to follow the Robert rule. I need to get a second on the motion. Then we can go into further discussion about it.
We already have a second.
Okay, I need to ask, so as I clarified the motion and the intent of it, do you second that?
Yes, I second.
There is a second. Okay, now you may further, what's your, you have a question?
Just, yes, a question I get to clarify. So I'm, I'm on the, I'm on a board and there's a quorum present. I'm an alternate, so I would sit in the audience, but I could still, as a citizen, discuss and speak and come up and cripple out a form and still be a part of, without having to come up and sit. I just would do it as a citizen.
As a citizen, you can, yeah, you can request to speak.
Okay, so that's just my concern. I don't know why there would be an alternate if they, if that opened everybody, but, okay, that was what I needed to clarify.
That's the.
The motion, okay.
Yes, that's the motion on the floor. Any further discussion on this motion? All right, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Three, there's four. Councilman Ricketts is four. All opposed. One opposed. Okay, motion carries. All right, is there any on that second part? Is there any motion to disallow alternates for any boards? I'll put it that way. Is there any motion on that? All right, it doesn't appear, I don't see any motion. So that, if there is no motion, then we'll move on. So the, the alternate service has been defined?
And so we'll have an ordinance amendment at the next meeting reflecting those changes for you all to approve.
All right, then.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
It's just a question. So is there an ordinance now on how we remove a permanent member and put an alternate in place?
So all members, like, if you're talking about like an individual person, they're all subject to the council's discretion to appoint and remove. And so even in for item 8K, if you were to say, you could always say, I don't want an alternate. You can leave a position vacant as well. So you can remove, you can add people, you can also be vacant. If that answer.
So I wanted to answer your question. So yes, is, the procedure is, is that the member serves at the council's pleasure and you can remove, I think there might be one ordinance out there. I don't recall the board that you, that would, it would be with regard to planning and zoning, I believe, that you would have to have somewhat of a cause.
Park Board also has in their bylaws a way to remove.
And there's, but those are specified in those. But in general, as a whole, every member of every board serves at the council's pleasure and you can move and replace irregardless of the term. Okay, so that's, that's, yes. All right, then. Any other questions with regard to that? I do, let me ask. Did we not, did we send out to the council the bylaws and enabling ordinances? Now, there's, there's two different items here. These boards will have, here's an enabling ordinance that that define here, that enabled that board and also define the membership of it. And then also there's bylaws on how they'll conduct their business. All right, so if you haven't got that, we'll get it to you. All right, then, let's move on to item 8K, Discuss/Consider Act on Appointing Applicants to Serve on the City's Boards, Commissions and Economic Development Corporations for the term of October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2020. Four, correct, to your turn. And to appoint applicants to various boards, commission and economic development corporation vacancies for the remainder of the October 1, 2021 to September 30, 2023 term. I have included in the executive session and you can, should you desire, is to go into executive session and discuss the appointees if you should desire prior to you, anyone making any motions towards the appointees. Would you desire to go into executive session for that, that component to discuss any members?
Mayor Holsey, I would like to go into executive session because there's quite a few applicants.
Understood. All right, then.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
We have a speaker. Did you want to have that person speak before you go into executive session or after?
Please go let, you know, I don't know if they'll hang around. Please go, if you'd call on that speaker.
Sarah Nembou. Hello, I'm Sarah Nembou. I made an application to reapply for the Park Board team board there. And I just wanted to introduce myself. I realized that my application was a little bit vague. So my name is Sarah Nembou. I've lived in Haslett for five, over five years now. And I've been on the Park Board as an alternate and then as the chair for about two years, I believe. And so I've really enjoyed serving the city of Haslett and hope that y'all would choose me again to serve on that capacity. I also, background, I didn't fill it out on the application. I am a nurse practitioner. I cook children's in Fort Worth. And I've been a nurse practitioner for about a dozen years or so. And so I really enjoy, you know, building the economy and working with the kids and just making Haslett an enjoyable place for everybody. I think that the Park Board has been a very good fit for me. As I've researched some of the boards that we have, EDCB is one that stuck out to me as an opportunity. And I've spoke with some of those board members and listened to some of them in it and looked at the agendas. And I personally just feel that that would also be a good match. So I would hope that you guys would consider me for that board as well. Should you not choose other people, I believe there are two vacancies that are up for renewal on that board. And so I just wanted to let you know who I was and just ask for your support. And if you had any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, thank you very much. It's not particularly in. All right. The, okay, then, it would be appropriate that we go into the executive session now. And so if we could take a, I don't know, it is 9:29, call it 9:30. Do you want 10 minutes, five minutes, six, five minutes? Five minutes, let's see, let's recess the open session right now at 9:29 and reconvene in executive session. Excuse me, I can't hear myself talk. Excuse me, excuse me, madam. Excuse me. Is at 9:35 in executive session in the conference room. Thank you.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Very good.
I don't see anything.
Give us another sixty seconds or so and we'll start the open session again.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Landon, I see you back there. Can you hear us okay? Mr. Landon.
I can hear.
Your video is frozen, but we can hear you well. Just checking. I just want to make sure everything's working right. All right, it is ten fifty-five PM. We are resuming the open session. All members are present in the chambers and Councilmember Ricketts is present online with audio video. So we have, we are picking up with item eight K. Discuss, consider, and act on appointing applicants to serve on the city's boards, commission, and economic development corporations. And let's, we are at item two, discussion, consideration, and action.
Mayor Holsey.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to appoint the following applicants to serve on the city board's commissions and EDCs for the term of October first, twenty twenty-two, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. On the Hassett Economic Development Corporation type A, HEDC, Hildrith Makin to place five, Bernard Claycorn to place two, Brenda Ward to place four, and Nicholas Conan to place six. On the Hassett Community Economic Development Corporation type B, Ruthie Do to place four, Steve Olinese to place six, Patricia Parker, place two, and Kathy Brandon to place eight. On the library board, Benjamin Drury to place two. On the Parks and Recreation Board, Cindy Laird to place two, oh, excuse me, go back to the library board. Reappoint Rosemary Jablonsky to place four and Marietta Slater to place six. On the Parks and Recreation Board, Cindy Laird to place two, Sarah Nembo to place four, and Chuck Fielder to place six. And on Planning and Zoning Commission, Doreen Snedeker, place two, Paul Wallach, place four, Chuck Tackett, place five, and Joette Keane, place six.
Very good. All right, Council, I hope you kept record of all of those. Motion has been made to, for membership on EDC A, B, library board, Parks and Recreation Board, and Planning and Zoning. Is there a second to those memberships?
Mayor Holsey, I second that motion.
There's a second to the membership. Is there any further discussion, any questions according to the membership? All right, there is not, then I ask for the vote. All in favor? Uh, Mr. Ricketts, he says, okay, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. All right. Item eight L. Discuss, consider, and act on appointing a planning and zoning commission chair. My one input on this, Council, is I do recommend the appointment of Greg Kadash as chair. But it's up to you. I turn it over to you, Council. Anybody have a motion?
Mayor Holsey.
Yes.
I recommend that we approve Greg Kadash as chairman of PNC.
Motion is made to approve Greg Kadash as chairman of PNC. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Any discussion? There is none. I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? There's none opposed. Motion is unanimous. Oh, one opposed. Four, four, one opposed. But motion carries. Thank you, Council. All right, executive session. We have just come out of accession, executive session. Item ten, consider and take any action resulting from executive session with regard to the developer agreement, Council.
No action is necessary at this time. The developer agreement will ratify it after we have it signed and then the interlocal agreement that will need to be approved by the full council once it is put together.
Very good. Thank you. Any future agenda items?
I had one thing. I just wanted, and it doesn't have to be an agenda item. I was just hoping for a follow-up when Ms. Smith talked about some of the concerns on Second Street, the permanent stop signs and the more lighting at Hassett Community Park. I think the brush piles were taken care of as noted in our last reports for this, this meeting. But I was just maybe a follow-up on, on those requests.
Okay, repeat that again.
She had stated, Second Street needs permanent stop signs, more lighting at the Hassett Community Park. Her concerns were, were.
Okay, hold on, I'm writing.
Okay. Second Street needing permanent stop signs. That might have already have been taken care of. And she just asked about the idea of, or the possibility of more lighting at Hassett Community Park to discourage bakery.
All right, so I got the stop signs, community park lighting, and was there another item?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right then. Anybody else have anything?
Mayor Holsey.
Yeah.
I'd like to put on the agenda considering, to consider a mayor's salary for the next year.
A what?
A mayor's salary for the next year. Consider.
All right.
Sorry for the mayor.
All right. Um. Anybody else got anything? All right. Item twelve, adjourn. May I have a motion?
Mayor Holsey, I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay, we'll stay a little longer if you want to.
I'll second that.
There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you, Council. Y'all have a good night. No, yeah, it just kind of shocked me. Did I get carried? No. Uh, it's eleven oh-two PM.